By the way. You can hear the lawyers. But you can't hear him. He was loud and clear on the. But we were what we could be. Oh, yeah. When you had to turn, you turn it down. Yeah, so it's somewhere.
All right, we'll call the City of Kiwanee Common Council meeting to order for January eighth, twenty twenty four. Uh, let the record show all members are present, uh, with the exception of, uh, Shelton. Uh, please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Right. Two, approval of December eleventh, twenty twenty three common council minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve as submitted. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item four, public comment communication, stream at a time limit per person. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak to the council or public comment? Come up, sir, please, uh, state your name and your address.
Thank you, and I'm Paul, I live on Milwaukee Street. And, um, I had been leaving some messages to get information about any particular building codes and building permits in the city. And my president and the cabinet. Um, I haven't been getting any replies, but. Uh, also, I'd been leaving messages, uh, about business licensing and accepted types of businesses in the city. But I do leave the messages, but I don't get return calls. Oh, you have any direction for me on that? I know you're probably short on staff and everything else, but.
I'll, I'll try and call you tomorrow, assuming I'm actually here. Uh, so, yeah, assuming I'm here, otherwise it might be Wednesday. Um, I'll try and get back to you, building code. Definitely by the end of the week. Um, do you have one of your business cards? Yeah.
Is there any place that I'm not finding online that talks about the city building permits and codes?
Well, the the city's building permits are basically operated by a guy who's contracted to work here. There's a, there's a page on the website called building inspection, so you, you find out his contact point. So if you have any specific questions about building code, you can contact him. Uh, his name, his name Brett Guillet. Um, Inspection Services LLC. Um, I'll try and get back to you in terms of if you have specific questions about zoning and that type of thing.
Business like with you? Yeah, you know, I know it's a lot of it's probably county all that you guys agree to, but I'll catch up later. What's your name?
Uh, Heath, that's my, my name.
Okay, good.
Okay, I will, I will.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Uh, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on our public comment tonight? Federal Communications? Okay. All right, then, public comment is now closed. We'll move on to item five. Boards, commissions, committee, and staff reports, finance committee, public works committee, and staff reports. Any questions regarding any of the staff reports?
I'll make a motion for proof. One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mayor's report. Uh, the only thing I have to report tonight is I received a letter of resignation from councilperson Shelton, uh, citing personal reasons. Item seven A, I would like to move seven A adopt resolution number twenty twenty four to twenty thirty eight, confirming twenty twenty four city employee wages and salaries. Down to the last item, uh, the first item prior to item nine. Do we have any objections to that?
You made eight aye.
Or, uh, seven A, I would like to move down to, I guess it would be eight J.
Probably after the closed session.
Or after, oh, after closed session, I'm sorry. Uh, so that would be after, after item nine. Any objections? Does that do any motion for that or just, okay, an objection disposed, okay? All right, thank you, and we'll move on to item eight. Uh, new business. E A act on recommendation regarding twenty thirteen Ford Explorer Police Squad.
Uh, I know the Public Property Committee discussed this at the last meeting in December. Um, police department had four squad cars and they don't need four squads, they only need three, so they want to find out, they want to get some directions to what to do with the oldest of their vehicles, which is the twenty two, twenty thirteen Ford Explorer. Um, either transferring it to another department for their user declared surplus and put it up for bids. Um, there was some discussion among staff about transferring it to the marina, although the nature of the vehicle being an enclosed SUV doesn't necessarily work for them on some of the stuff that they have to do. Um. Although I should also note that the mayor, uh, the marina also recently purchased a new piece of equipment to reattach to, to, to fix their, uh, newer of their two pickup trucks, so they can actually shift it. It could be kind of nice. Um, so they, they're not in as terrible a need for a vehicle. Um, so I guess we're looking for direction. I'm not sure what the public property committee decided to do at the last meeting in this regard. So I'll defer to Eric if he has.
I will relive to discuss that we're going to go to the, uh, marina with it.
Okay.
But if Augie doesn't need it, then.
I guess it's, I guess it's a sort of a direct discussion point for Augie.
Well, sometimes people come up from the boats and they do need a ride to the, you know, grocery store, so it would be nice to have something a little bit better for them to go up there. Cause, uh, you know, you usually have. Um, doing up there, but. What else? Running to the, um, seawall to, you know, catching people over there.
Okay.
If they're using the other vehicle or something for, you know, cleaning bathrooms or something, but it can't. Not just because they got stuff in the front seat or cleaning themselves, I mean, like, it'd be nice to have something a little bit nicer to, you know, go catch those people, or if they want to take a shower from the seawall or something, bring them back or something, it's always nice to have something a little bit nicer, but.
And the seats fold down in the back, you can put stuff in the back. Um, the ninety-three GMC is at the marina right now and that succeeded, far exceeded its life expectancy. So that was discussed at personnel or public property that that would be one of the items that's going to be listed in Wisconsin surplus. Um. We know the vehicle, um, I mean, we have to rotate our police squads. It's, it's, uh, lived its life there to the end there, but I think it's still more value to the city right now than it probably is that it's going to be fetching on auction, so. I think it'd be in our best interest to retain that vehicle. And if, you know, the marina's still got a pickup, um, there's other pickups in the street shop, if you needed something, you could get from there, but I, I think we're going to get our money out of it better this way than sending it down the road, so.
Okay, then my recommendation steps are to be vote option one of the recommended motion, just to make it clear.
Doing the motion.
So the motion that we would be looking at, um, I would be looking for a motion that we approve the reassignment of the twenty thirteen Ford Explorer Police Squad to the marina.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. It B act on recommendation to reduce city-owned real estate assets.
Uh, this is another item that Public Property Committee previously discussed. Um, we have had a local property owner who's requested access to potentially purchasing some of these assets. Uh, several of them that were on his list, one of which wasn't even owned by the city. Two others are currently on the, the most recent blade control program. We still don't have closure on that yet, so that clock hasn't even started. And once it does, then it's on a five-year clock unless they want to pay back that portion of the the grant and then take it over and do whatever they want. Um, I've listed those in the, in the memo, uh, the only ones that pertain are the two parcels that are addressed as four thirteen Beardsley. Um, they're currently zoned local business. Um. So if somebody wanted to use them for residential, they'd either have to have a business with residential as an accessory, or they'd have to rezone to something else to be able to put in this kind of residential on there. Um, the other two properties, as I mentioned, are currently restricted to affordable housing as defined by, uh, housing urban development, so. Um, if you desire to do, uh, this kind of thing at this time, you can forward it over to the plan commission for a recommendation. Um, the process under state law is to declare them surplus assets to be sold or otherwise auctioned or something else. Um. I don't have a specific recommendation on this. If you care to move forward with four thirteen Beardsley to declare surplus assets, that's fine with me. Um, we can just make a decision and make a decision and move on with that.
So if I remember correctly, that was, those were just tore down. That house was. The. It wasn't a grant through the state.
Yeah.
But it was a, um.
Yeah, it's basically like you took possession of, like.
Was that a blight?
Elimination, yes.
Project?
Yes.
Yeah, but it wasn't one specifically tied to CDBG, so there's no restriction.
No.
On the, on being able to use it in the future.
Was that the property with the tree growing through the porch?
Uh, don't mean, yeah, no, it's not.
It's the across the street.
Across the street.
Yeah, so it would be on the west side. So, and it's a fairly large lot, I believe.
Um, yeah, the, the one lot is much larger. The lot where the house was was the small portion, but the, the one, the larger lot has also got slope that goes like this up to um, Ellis Street. So it's not particularly viable for anything other than, you know, unless they want to.
I.
Into the wall.
I would like to see it sold and rezoned as a residential property. I can't see a business going in down there. Um. I.
I'm, I'm comfortable sending it to the plan commission for review and go with their recommendation. I think this is my opinion. The city doesn't need to own it.
That Beardsley lot was zone B one.
Yeah. It used to have, there used to be a bar on that property.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
It used to be a grocery, the Clover, the Clover store was there. There was a grocery store.
It was the last chanceloum when I was there. You walked in and you were taking a chance.
The recommendation then, Heath, you're going to be looking for, I guess, if we're looking at, um, liquidating these properties.
This one.
Are we doing these individually? Okay, um, so the Beardsley property, um, that would probably be then option one, and that would go to the planning commission and then at a later date.
Come back to the council.
Come back to the council and we can put stipulations on there, sunset clause, whatever. Okay. So then I would entertain a motion. For option one, that we move forward with the, what's the number of the street?
Four thirteen Beardsley.
Four thirteen Beardsley. Uh, property to the city plan commission for review and recommendation is surplus.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
We'll say that.
Yeah. Uh, that we need to roll on. Uh, any further discussion? Please call a roll.
Uh, Janita Zimmerman?
Aye.
Robin Nelson?
Aye.
Jeff Conley?
Aye.
Here's Wes Nikki?
Aye.
Kathy Brown?
Aye.
John Blaha?
Yes.
Chimber, Surfer?
I wouldn't have to just only plan a commission, but that's.
It doesn't have to be the need of motion.
Next time. I got two more shakes on it.
Thanks.
All right, uh, let's go to thirteen oh four Ellis Street, the drab property. For his own B one.
And we love thirteen oh four and Ellis and one twenty-three Kilborn together. Um, because I would like to make a motion that we do no action on those two properties at this time.
Um, we could do that, um.
Is that a motion?
Well, she, she's asking a question for, I'd like to know if I could do that.
I don't, I don't think you, I. It's not designed that you have to have separate action on every item. If you have collective, if you if she wants to make a motion to do both of them on, uh, do, don't do this.
No, she could. The only thing, the only thing that this saying no action is, I would like the discussion to be why? Why would we want to wait? Because if we talked about potentially building their, um, multifamily housing, meaning in, in the discussion I've had with some council members and whatnot, it would be possibly two duplexes could fit on that lot.
Particular, yeah, thirteen oh four, yeah. One twenty-three Kilborn.
And that would, based on the, the dollar amount of rent.
Yeah.
That could fit under the CDBG stipulations.
Yeah, so theoretically.
We wouldn't have to wait, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, you could theoretically do something.
If that's a direction that we think that we maybe go with it versus tabling it, waiting for the CDBG to expire. And then we can do anything we want and put a single family house on there or, or whatever. I just want the council to be aware that we have that option, that we could possibly develop it now.
When does it expire?
Probably what, three and a half year, three years?
Oh, no, for, for those two properties that we.
Oh, no, that's the fisherman's point. We're not even starting a clock on that one.
Yeah, that's probably be, we'll be spending the final stuff to close that out this month, ready to wait for December's big statement.
Well, the five years.
Annual stuff, and then the five years starts after. So that would be anywhere from three weeks from now to two months from now, depending on.
So do we have a definition on affordable housing?
It would be the HUD definition, because that's where the regulations.
It's based on the mean income of the city of Kiwanee?
And is identified by the Metropolitan Statistical Area, however they define that area.
And that gives you what it should get for an average monthly.
Yeah.
And, and are, are somebody, is somebody going to be able to build a duplex and rent both sides to cover their investment? I, I don't have the answer to that. But I'm just saying that, do we want to keep that option open and we could solicit bids on something like that? And if we're not getting feedback that's acceptable, well, we took a shot at it and we can still wait out the five-year clock.
The city, the government understanding inspector, the city still. Goal of what goes there and how it's set up.
Through the planning commission and the city council, yes, so.
Essentially, you could send it to planning commission to entertain ideas. And if it's something that the city doesn't like, you don't have to entertain it.
Correct, and as long as it's satisfying the terms of the CDBG grant.
So I don't see no harm in sending it to planning commission because the city would overall have final say on it. And if it's a project that the city doesn't like, they can reject it.
So back to your original question, if you wanted to lump both of those together and make a motion, you may.
I'll let somebody else pitch a motion.
If, if, we're still in discussion.
We're still in discussion.
I'm comfortable sending it to the planning commission because we still have control of it. And if it's a project that we don't like.
You can reject, refuse, whatever.
But there might be a project that could make qualifications that the city.
Yeah.
Might say it's a good job.
Don't we just need a direction? We don't necessarily need a motion for it.
Well, the, the options were motions.
If you're trying to sell it, then you'd want to have a declared surplus asset. If you're looking to market at them, you don't necessarily have to do anything with them.
I'm fine with that option.
It'd be the same option that we did for Beardsley.
Hmm?
We moved to planning commission.
We moved to planning commission as a surplus property.
Um, we'd be doing the same for these though, right?
Not necessarily, because there's a caveat of the HUD specification or.
Yeah, the under, under state, if you don't sell an asset because you declared surplus, it has to go through the planning commission for review on the way back to council. And you could choose to say whenever it comes back that. We don't want to do that right now.
I mean, it, it seems to me we would have to go to the planning commission for this as well. They have to understand the parameters of the CDBG grant, that's all. So.
We can do that.
Okay.
Forward to them.
Start the wheel rolling.
Yep.
So then I would entertain a motion. We, we move forward with uh, thirteen oh four Ellis Street and one twenty-three Kilborn Street. As option one, uh, to move those properties to the city plan commission for review and recommendation as surplus properties. I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. H C approved cost estimate for constructing police department locker room using donations.
You want to squeeze the motion or you want to?
I guess we've already talked about it, so. And I don't have funds yet, um, but right behind as committed that they will donate the funds, um, based off of the estimate that I had presented last year. That they are willing to at least influence the rule and get us, depending on if they have a period of year or not. You may get more funds. Uh, they also invited us to apply again next year for more funding, uh, potentially to get the lockers to finish that out. So we're just looking, um, for the approval to actually approach the builder again, get a definitive, um, estimate and then try and get on a schedule for construction.
So we, we've had some brief cost estimates, right, of what we think it would cost through that contractor. And you would not then begin construction until you secured all the funding?
Well, and at least the funding from Hooray for Hollywood, which will not be until end of February or March, probably sometime in March that we would have the funds. And it would be up to the builder, I guess, at that point, I mean, could something happen, um, and that we wouldn't have the funding from Hooray for Hollywood? I mean, there's always that what if, so I would, I would want to secure that before we move forward.
Okay, so we wouldn't be half in the middle of it and suddenly we can't find the money and.
Right, I'm just going to get something current from the builder and then get onto his schedule so that, um, when the time comes and we can start moving forward, uh, we're not trying to get into a construction schedule.
I move to authorize Police Chief Miller to engage a contractor toward completion of a department locker room remodeling project inside City Hall.
Yes, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you for, uh, going above and beyond, uh, securing the private funds to do this.
Very excited, thank you.
A D approved contract for cemetery mowing services with lawn and landscaping specialists.
Uh, yeah, this is the company that we've, uh, hired to do lawn mowing and lawn maintenance in the cemetery for several years. Uh, their current contract runs, um, well, basically expires April twenty twenty five, but more or less it's just a remainder for this year. Uh, as requested, city has reviewed the contract and considers the work done by the contractor to be extremely high care, high quality and very professional. Um, they're able to do their work. Okay, um, they're able to do their work efficiently with a, a crew of, uh, usually three people. And they usually get it done roughly a day with a couple of, um, employees and a couple of, of large riding mowers. Um, they, um, they replace the work of what we would require, basically one full, one staff member to be doing roughly forty hours a week. Um, to try and cover the same quantity, and then we'd have to have one full tractor dedicated to just the cemetery. So I, I ran through the cost, uh, value in the analysis and indicated that, uh, contract that they're requesting, which is a three-year extension out through twenty twenty seven. Um, is a good value for money for what we have to do in the cemetery to make, maintain it as a reasonably maintained public space. Um, so staff has recommend, public works is, um, public works committee reviewed this in December, recommended approval. Um, all funds are already budgeted in the cemetery, uh, part of the general fund. So staff recommends approval, uh, for this contract through, uh, twenty twenty seven.
I'll move. All right, we have a motion in a second that we approve the contract for cemetery mowing services with lawn and landscaping specialists for cemetery mowing services through year twenty twenty seven. We have a motion in a second. Are there, is there any further discussion?
I just want to say that, um, this, we've had this company now for three years, four years.
They're going on six or seven.
Is it six or seven? Okay. So, and I've heard nothing but good things from people that um, notice our cemetery.
That are there.
Yeah. The ones that are cold, but.
They like it, okay.
Leaf collection and everything too in the fall when all the leaves fall in the cemetery.
Yeah. And they also trim all the, the
shrubs.
shrubs and that, so. So they do a nice job.
All right, any further discussion? Please call a roll.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Wes Nikki?
Aye.
Brown?
Yeah.
Blaha?
Yes.
Brewster?
Listen, carry.
E E adopt resolution authorizing staff to pursue financing programs for the development of the business park project under the E D A and for financing of the Dodge Street reconstruction project.
Um, this is partially, um, as requested by E D A. I'll cover the easy part first since we talked about the Dodge Street portion, uh, last month when, when council authorized proceeding, uh, with that project. Um, I contacted Justin, uh, with Robert W. Verder, our financial advisors to offer a program for how to proceed with that project, uh, for financing. And they came back with response, which I attached as part of your package, um, to basically authorize a Dodge Street project, uh, with some flexibility on the numbers because I had pointed out something that Brandon brought up on that contract. Um, that because we're dealing with a a probable cost opinion as of twenty twenty three, we're not actually planning to actually do any construction until twenty twenty six because we want to make sure we get the design, we get what would buy in on what we're proposing to do. And then we can move forward with the grant applicant or the loan and applications which require complete engineering. Uh, so they can assess and give us an actual number for what, what they're going to pay for. So, uh, on that side, we, we have a steady program to do this. That's actually the larger part of the financing. Um, I asked him about how to pay for doing business park development, how we would pay for that because rather than simply using, uh, drawing off of our general fund balance, we could, what could we do in any alternative, some kind of loan or something to pay for development? It is possible to do that with what they call a note anticipation note, which is not perfect for finance people. Um, to get funding to at least start to pay for stuff. And then once we start to get reimbursed, then we can use that to pay back that note and then take out a longer term general obligation, um, borrowing a refunding bond to pay for basically the remainder. The bulk of that bond would actually go toward paying for Dodge Street, but uh, we need to have flexibility on the financing so we can pay for the stuff about drawing down our general fund resources to pay for, pay for the project. Um, with that, you've all received my three days' worth of tones, um, financing and, and the ability to actually pay for business parks. Um, as of right now, uh, the three beneficiaries, we already know Merton said no. Um, Brandon Roddy, I talked to him today. He said, well, I signed on as interested three years ago, but in the meantime, I've built a house, so I really don't want to be moving my project. The third beneficiary in the grant application has also moved ahead. They've built on their property out on Range Line Road. So for them to pick up and move doesn't make, make any sense. So suffice to say, all three beneficiaries are not interested in moving. Um, so you'd be building a business park that would start to depreciate as soon as we put in the ground. And we're waiting for somebody to show up or spending quite a bit of resources trying to recruit people to show up. Um. My best case scenario would be if you were to get, I, I think the most the most optimistic scenario you could get would be having the equivalent of nine G R metalworks show up right after you're done and build and show up there. Because that's the only way you generate the kind of money needed in order to pay off to, to contribute to one. Otherwise, all you're really doing is you're debt, debt financing a, a, a development to extend water and sewer and roadway into a place where nobody's actually going to build anything. Or at least we don't know anybody that's committed to go in there. So it's sort of the problem that I think a lot of communities face, and I've seen it in a lot of other places. Even in places that are successful, Franklin's Business Park is the largest in the state. They still got six open spots after thirty years. And those spots are unlikely to ever get filled because they're kind of weird sites, weird location, it's too small, got too much going on, too many negatives. Um, Franklin seemed to be moving forward because now they're building a. Franklin seemed to be moving forward because now they're building a corporate park. So they keep spending more and more resources because they keep trying to, they keep trying to change the balance. Part of that is their perspective on development. They want to maintain, they want to get to a seventy thirty balance between residential and commercial assessments. Well, that was their goal. Twenty years ago now and uh, they've, they were at eighty twenty when they started and now they're down to seventy six point four after twenty years. So they spent a lot of resources to move four points. Well, a combined total of eight points and corrections. I'm not of the opinion that it makes a lot of sense to do this, but. I'll defer to counsel. If you want us to move forward. I'll contact Baird and say, okay, we want to move forward with this program. Because it'll take them some time to set up the note anticipation notes. We can actually. Go to market, get the money and then use that as a means to start paying for for some of the project. It'll also depend on what you do next with the next item, which is selecting the engineer. So uh, I prefer to counsel for what you would like to do next.
I think just to go a little further on that, he thought we've kind of been trying to work around is the parameters of this infrastructure that's being put in. Has to meet the criteria of the grant application, correct?
Yes.
And that was based on three businesses that are no longer interested in the site. So we're going to be building infrastructure for three businesses. They're not going to be on the site. We have no one interested in the site as of right now, how we're aware of. And we're going to have this infrastructure that's kind of tailored. And that could be a a a large waste of money. Could it be reconfigured at some point for someone else? Of course, but that's just additional monies.
Well, the, and the match is four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and eight dollars, which.
Will be more than that.
Yeah, so.
Between interest payments and everything else.
So does the city have that? Money sitting around that we can? Put towards this, I don't know.
He he said in contact with Baird, we can, we can make that financing work.
We can, we can make the financing work as as it pertains to where we are. But it means that you're devoting, let's say, five hundred thousand dollars of your debt levy. To a project that's not going to have any immediate returns versus devoting that to. Well, any other capital project that we actually need because you actually have those obligations on the books that you have to get done. Because you have a lot of them. As I pointed out in my email on Friday, there's a lot of capital obligations that we have to have that we. The things that when we took them over, that's sort of what we said, we were going to agree to maintain them. And I've seen, I've seen situations where we took, I've I've been in previous situations where they've taken over maintenance on something and then wouldn't. And that's, that's a rather awful position to be in. So um, I do, I don't, I'm not comfortable. I myself, just as a professional planner, basically. I'm not all that comfortable with the idea of doing this, but if council's direction is to, let's forward. Okay, I'll, I'll do my level best. We'll do our level best to make it happen, make it work for you and get this stuff done and implement with our professional staff. Get that, to get that going for you.
Do we know, there has to be a starting point for the sewer and water extension there. Do we know where that would have to go in?
Yeah.
I mean, there has to be a starting point where we say, okay, no matter what goes there. The sewer and water has to start here and it has to go this way, correct?
Pretty much for tractor supplying this is kind of.
So it'll go east and west? The main would go east and west?
Yeah.
How far down?
On Highway forty two that had, once again, in the business park, you'd have to go up and it passed the driveway there for um. Where, you know, it's not this dump or whatever, basically, right now.
All the way down to Lake Shore?
Uh, no, it would not go all the way through to Lake.
It did not include a loop?
No, it did not.
No, so I mean, if you, if you want to do a water loop, for example, which would. Be a preference from a standpoint of water, water supply and water into for provision for public water for.
But that was not included in this project.
Wasn't included because business park didn't extend the lake shore, so it didn't include water loop to connect.
Do we know what it would cost to extend it as far as you think we have to go?
Kind of put in our proposal together. I did kind of a, I did do kind of an estimate to figure out kind of what our budget would be on the proposal. I mean, I think total project with engineering, infrastructure. Take this to self here, I had to kind of put something together for it. I mean, I think you're probably looking at probably two and a half million dollars, two to two and a half million dollars total.
No, I'm not talking about all of it. I'm just talking about running the extension and.
To connect the log in on the other side?
No, not to connect it. You said you weren't going to connect it to Lake Shore, right?
Correct.
So how far would you run it east then off of, off of forty-two?
We did it based off of what the two thousand four concept plan was put together for that. It was.
About a thousand.
I'd say probably fifteen hundred feet, somewhere along those lines.
What would it cost to do that fifteen hundred feet? Do we have any?
Have any idea what that, what that original thing was?
I guess the reason I'm asking, the reason I'm asking is if we have to, if we have to spend almost a half a million dollars anyway. Then we could spend a half million dollars at any time. If we're just going to extend it in fifteen hundred feet, that's why I'm asking. Does that make sense to you?
Well, yeah, although you could, you could easily make the argument that if somebody was coming in and said, you know, we want to. We'll take your business park, we want to take your property and turn it into a business of some kind and we want to extend water into there. You could float that as a tid. That way you could pay for it with it, with the increment increase. Over what you're, over what you would be getting baseline on the property as as an agricultural assessment. So you could do that, do that as a baseline number, come up with that number and then figure out what the increased increment would be after you took possession.
Is that part in, is that part in the uh, it's not. So we would have to extend the Tiff district out that far?
Or create another one.
Or create another one.
You might be better off creating another one because otherwise your Tiff district is going to be.
It'd be the whole north side.
Yeah, pretty much. You'd be extending radically north.
It's an option, saying, you know what? There's no interest in the business park being there. We'll just make that a new something.
So I guess.
That it's federal granted, they're not going to.
What I'm saying is we're probably better off to create a district.
At a point when you.
At a point.
And it actually makes sense to do so.
At, at a point where it actually makes sense to do it. Do you have any idea what that would cost? Yeah, fifteen hundred feet, you don't, you have a count? I mean, just, I'm just curious.
He's just, he's just looking for a ballpark.
I'm just looking for a ballpark bigger.
But, but again, we never had any signed, I thought.
Water main? How big a sewer main would have to go? How big is that water main?
Yeah.
That's a ten inch main.
Let's just keep them one.
You, you need something big enough to be able to provide the supply for.
Do we have enough pressure to run a ten inch water main out that far?
There's not a whole lot of pressure on that end of town. If you were to actually move it, you would not be increasing your pressure really at all. You know, you'd be setting up more if there was ever a water tower or something that would be built on that, you know, on the north side of the river. Um, that you'd have more capacity for it. So you're going to have more pressure than you'd have more capacity. You'd have more storage in the pipe descent. That would be part of the business yourself in there because there's not a ton of pressure outside. I think I think they'll get, put some sort of pressure boosting system in there.
Okay, that was my next question. There probably wouldn't be enough water pressure. To, to supply a, to supply a fire suppression system then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's around three two forty two pounds of pressure on the dead end on Lake Shore Drive and on Highway forty-two.
That's what Nate said.
Not a whole lot beyond what the actual minimum requirement is.
The bare minimum is thirty-five, I think.
Yep. So there's not a whole lot of pressure there.
So the other thing that, just to make clear that the three that. Were possibility, there was never nothing in writing that they would do it.
The only one that I got confirmation on Brandon Roddy.
Right.
Indicated that he signed it, but then his circumstances changed it, so he's not interested now.
Yeah.
I spoke with Dennis Mertens over a year ago. He said he never intended on doing that.
Yeah.
The only other one which I left a message, I said, if you call me back and let me know if this was something that you were interested in doing, I'd get to hear back from him. But as I say, he's already developed a site out on Lane Range Line Roads, so I don't see the reason why he would come after he's already put the resources local.
I mean, I think everything that we were looking at up there has has changed, right? Um, when you no longer have commitments from any developers and everything in this grant, you have to remember was based on those three specific developers. Um, I think what John's getting at is, geez, you know, if we could get that, we could continue it with either more money or it did later. I mean, that's a good way of thinking, you know, but. Having said that, if we've still got a blank slate up there and somebody comes and they want to do a different type of development, whether it's. Multi-family or different businesses, we could look at a tid later on and still be able to get. A return on our investment there. Not tying up this half a million dollars right now. I mean, it looks good. We got this grant, but. If you run the numbers, you did the return on investment on that and then our borrowing capacity being tied down?
Yeah, it, it would, it would put a dent in your ability to borrow for other projects that you mentioned or emergencies or, yeah, or any.
Or even a, a, a project that's shovel ready and you've got a developer sitting here, hey, I'd like to do this.
Yeah.
And you get a builder's agreement then anyway.
You want to have that kind of capacity to be able to do those kinds of flexible things and. I just, I don't see the purpose of tying down that kind of funding when you could use it for something else. It would have a more beaten, a more immediate benefit.
Well, this is the third time I've heard that the water supply is pretty good and who's going to want to build there at all if they can't get water pressure?
Well, especially if there requires a lot of water.
There is a pressure system Brandon's talked about in the past. There, there is an alternate to a water tower up there that we could do depending on what the development is.
Yeah, you could put always, you know, like a pressure boosting station or something like that. It would be probably more costly than, you know, than a water tower would be. So there's any stuff that you can do. Uh, it's a city and you're looking at spending more money to.
Less than a million dollar water tower though.
Oh, yeah, you got a million dollar water tower, right? It's your one point five two million dollars would be my guess these days for starting scratch.
And I should, I should note that that was originally part of this grant before they pulled the plug on it because they didn't want to, the number was starting to creep up. So they pulled the plug on it as part of this grant application.
It was originally, and that, what that's been, and fought for quite a few, a long time to put a water tower on the north side of town. So.
Can you just refresh us a little bit on what the Dodge Street project, the city's portion of that would be? Um, do we remember?
Yeah, the, the Dodge Street.
Point one million or something?
The, the, the reconstruction was going to be split into three portions. Uh, one point three six five million roughly was going to be devoted to the whatever wasn't covered under the. The two loan, the safe drinking water loan and the clean water fund loan programs. That could cover, that would basically cover the bulk of the, the road improvements themselves, the street curb gutter, that type of thing. It also includes uh, under for the financing portion, we want to give ourselves a little bit of room. On the water and sewer lines that could be included and then paid off when we get the loan at loan funds. And then divert the rest of it into the, the debt uh, the general obligation refunding bond. So the bulk of that would be approximately um, one point three six five million dollars because the loan funds would they be repaid. Assuming we get them, which I think is pretty good, that. Just we don't get those on the city. All we'd be doing is repaving the roads on, repaving the road on top of. Probably not very good pipes.
Oh, yeah.
Including a lot of lead pipes. So this, this co- covers a, a bunch of stuff that. Right now is incentivized to do. At the, at the rate they're going, it's only a matter of time before it goes from incentivizing to, and you thou shalt do this. And I'd rather we did that before we repaved the road rather than having to do it after.
Any further discussion on the Dodge Street and the business park projects?
Yes, we're going to be looking at giving some direction here.
I have two motions and I listed them as options, but if you, if you're. If your inclination is to uh, tell the E D A no thanks, then option one has to go first and then option two deals with the. Payment for the, the authorization, securing the financing for the Dodge Street project. Does that make sense?
I just, I don't, I don't see option one. Or option, the business park to be included in, in what we're doing here tonight. I, I would not having anyone on the hook here to go into that business park. We have to put in a, a road as well. A road to nowhere.
The road would actually wouldn't have to go anywhere. Yeah, that was. The road would have to put a sewer, water, stormwater.
Part of the grant.
Water pump or stormwater on, off there as well, since there's nothing for the storm.
All based on the design of those three businesses.
Yeah, they, they designed it. The design originally, the schematic was based on a two thousand four plan. Uh, yeah, two thousand four, so it's a twenty-year-old plan. And that's what they submitted with the application. As far as E D A is concerned, this is what you're building. We can be flexible on where you're at, but. Um, with the way around well, I mean, that they were flexible on that mark, but everything else is.
Written stone.
Yeah, we'll build what you, what you said you were going to build.
So this could essentially cost more than the four hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Is that what we're saying?
For, it could because.
I mean, we have to know. I mean, is it like twenty thousand dollars more or three hundred thousand dollars more?
It could very well be more than that.
The grant is a eighty percent grant, twenty percent match, right? So really what would dictate, you know, how much it could be over potential if you whatever bid price if you go on the project. You know, if your bids come in a lot higher than what was submitted for the grant application, then the city would be on the hook to know that cost. Really, tell the project fit. There's no way to know. Hundred percent, you know, how much, you know, potential extra, you know, or best case scenario, it'd be less.
The numbers go up until we reach the, until they reach their tot- their total and they, their total is specified, so.
It ends up like to jail.
Quite a bit higher.
And we're paying interest on that money that we're borrowing.
Yeah. Yes.
So uh, do we have a motion for either option one?
If, if you're going to not do the bu- business part, then you have to do option one first.
Right, so I guess what's our consensus on doing the business part? Based on what we're understanding here, we have no developers. We have strict uh, requirements on how this is designed, which is designed around these three developers. That are no longer in the picture. And we're stretching our borrowing power by putting this money into this business park. And not having anyone going in there.
At this point, I'm not for a business park.
Would you make a motion then?
How do I would that?
I move we authorize staff to contact the E D A to close a grant application authorized on May third, twenty twenty-two.
I move to authorize the staff to contact the E D A to close the grant application authorized on May third, twenty twenty-two.
I have a motion. Second by Nelson. Any further discussion? There's no further discussion, please call a roll.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Hi.
Conley?
Aye.
Was Nikki?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Baja?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, so then option two would be. We either.
We adopt a resolution authorizes securing of financing for the Dodge Street reconstruction project.
Yeah, so.
I'll do it.
All right, so we have a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the securing. Of financing for the Dodge Street reconstruction pros- project. Is there a second?
Seconds.
Janita?
Robin.
Oh, Robin, I'm sorry.
I was about to, but I was talking.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question on the Dodge Street project. Is it, is it possible to do some type of a cost analysis as to what it's going to cost on property taxes?
We did, I thought.
Oh, we, we did, do we?
It would.
I'm talking about.
It would come on the debt levy. Uh, well, we did sort of. They, they sort of did. Uh, let me see. Well, they sort of did, but it was with the, the. Note anticipation note followed by the other one and it would go. Note anticipation note followed by the other one and it would go. Principal would go up. Um, let me see. I mean, if you wanna hold off on it, combined mill rate for combined debt service. Uh, would go up to a peak of two point five one on the debt service. And that would be in twenty twenty nine. Looks like, yeah, twenty twenty nine. So right now it's at, uh, for twenty twenty four, it'd be a dollar forty four. So it goes up to two fifty one at the peak. And, but that was with both the Dodge Street and the. They have business parks, it will be some number less.
That's your question then?
Any further discussion?
Zimmerman. Nelson. Was Nikki. Brown. Brewster.
Motion carried.
So that would mean there's no action required on eight F. And that moves us to eight G, approved contract addendum for Cedar Corporation for the Dodge Street Reconstruction Project.
Yeah, uh, at our meeting in December, when you authorized us to go forward with the formal design work on this, um. They've actually already been doing work. We're authorized a little bit of money for them to go out and do the topographic. Drone flying last month. To at least get that done before, before the snow started flying, which, which is a good thing. I have attached, uh, addendum number twenty. Which identifies the scope of services and the cost estimate for these programs. As I've mo- noted in the last item. Uh, those costs will eventually be paid for under, uh, the, the program for the debt financing. Um, obviously without the business park, it'd be, uh, known anticipation note to cover the cost for. Engineering services so we can pay for that in lieu of. The full thing and then switch over to a, to refunding bond. Total cost estimate listed, generally nineteen thousand dollars, which was in line with what the previous opinion, the probable cost was. This covers everything moving forward up to and including, I think, the creation of the bid documents for the advertising and then. Uh, moving forward with the actual program. Now, let Brandon have any, if you've got a question specific for him on this item. Yeah, I apologize that, that was, um. That was the other part that was the. You have the engineering services and the administration, then there's the other part, which is the construction management, which is going to be a. Complex operation for this particular work.
How, how much is the total that we're looking to approve?
Five hundred ninety nine thousand.
And I should also note that because this project is also listed in the adopted C I P, we could propose money to at least cover some of the initial costs. So it doesn't actually have to come out of the general fund. It can come out of the C I P fund.
And this money has all been factored into the initialization of the project and going forward and it'll be in the.
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's just one of our first steps. Not first, but next steps.
Engineering has to happen because we have to know what. They have to, they have to know what they're doing when they go out there. It's not just a simple mill and repay project. It's digging up pipes and making sure we have them correct. They're seated correctly and they're the correct age and all, all this stuff that has to go into it.
Alright, does anyone have any questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve contract addendum number twenty. To begin engineering design work and loan application preparation for the Dodge Street reconstruction product, project. With payments to be made initially from the C I P fund, and that's at five hundred ninety nine thousand dollars.
I have a motion.
Sure. There a second? Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Zimmerman. Nelson. Conley. Was Nikki. Brown. Blaha. Brewster.
Motion carried.
Uh, H, eight H, approve appointment of Jim Clark as an election worker for the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five term.
Also move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Most, motion carried. E I Financial Reports, month ending November twenty twenty three. Any questions concerning those? Okay, then we'll move on. We'll move on. Item nine, closed session. A common council may enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat. Stats nineteen point eight five one C to consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which. The common council has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to a performance evaluation of city employee. And we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Second by Zimmerman. Uh, call roll please.
Zimmerman.
Hi, Nelson.
Hi, Conley. Was Nikki. Brown.
Yes.
Motion carried. Alright, this time we're in closed session, so thank you all for coming. Need a brief recess, anyone?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take a brief.